It is 4:30, and I want to call to order the -- this session of the City of Tallahassee Planning Commission. You have the agenda before you, folks. I see by the number here that we have six, and that is a quorum, so we are able to conduct business. Therefore, I will ask Ray Nois if he'll lead us in the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Goodbye, we thank you for all the blessings of life. We thank you for this opportunity to serve and do things that necessary in our community. I ask you to bless this meeting tonight and our service that would be pleasing in your sight. Please thank you at your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, Stephen. Okay, if we will ask that the commissioners please read the minutes on pages three and four.
This may be.
I have a motion in second that the minutes from the May 20 meeting be approved as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Reports of officers and staff? No report from you? Well, I'm assuming that this is a place where the officers can make a report or whatever?
If they want to.
Okay, well, I do want to. Some of you read in here that there was the invitation for us to attend and have comment on the ideas that were presented for the North Jackson Streetscape Plan. I'm pleased to say that we were very well represented there. Lee Lawson and myself and Ray Nois and others were there. Dr. Blanks, you were there at one point, a little bit later, but still there. So, we had a good representation of that meeting, and I do appreciate all of the people attending that. I would also like to let everyone know there was also a meeting that we were invited by the mayor to attend on flood control and water control in our area, which was very pertinent to our situation because, obviously, when we make decisions about residential and commercial properties, flood control has to be a part of what we do. That was an informative meeting at the first. Myself and Rupa attended that meeting, and we were asked quite a few questions. I'm sure, Scott, you got talks who were called afterwards because we forwarded a lot of that to you and to the person who's in control of the stormwater here. So, hopefully, it didn't cause you any inconvenience, but we did try to steer them to the right people to be able to get the information that they needed in those areas that they ask about. So, I'm very appreciative of Rupa attending that meeting with me and supporting us in that. So, reports on the staff. In the old business, we have to take up item A, which we took up last time. Lee, I need a clarification. We held a public hearing on this last time.
Right, and you postponed the vote for this meeting?
So, do we need to open a public hearing at this meeting?
You're not required to. You can if you choose to, the board can.
I think it would be a good idea for us to do that, because we do have people here that are present who are representing that.
And we talked to the applicant and met with them and went over to the property and looked at it and was wanting to change the recommendation from staff. The property is sold for the lot that's between lots one and two. There was an issue about separation. What they plan on doing, if those lots are sold to separate parties, then they were going to need to remove the wooden staircase and the wooden landing near the common lot line of Lot One and Lot Two that would be created, and it need to be replaced with a metal staircase and a metal landing.
And that was agreed to at that time?
Yeah, we discussed it with them, and the way that the properties or the houses sit, they kind of jog in and out from one another, so it would meet the separation requirements of the residential building code by doing that.
Okay, then we're going to open a public hearing on this matter right now, and we'll then discuss for the council after that or for the commission after that. So, I'm going to open a public hearing on this issue once more so their comments can be made on the subject of subdividing these four properties or subdividing into four properties, this one property that is zone commercial at South Washington Street and East Lauderdale Street. The rules of the public hearing will be that any person wishing to speak will be allowed two minutes to speak. If someone is speaking and you want to designate your minutes for them, you may be able to do so. That will be allowed, but anybody, whether it be the speaker or the designator of the minutes, must come forth, give their name, their address, so that we know who you are and where you're from, all right? The public hearing is now open for anyone from the public.
I'm Jim Colley. I'm one of those example in Tallahassee, United States of America. This, what was stated is correct. We've agreed to, if lots one and two are sold separately, to tear down the staircases and put up a metal staircase. This group of four living units at one time was configured in four lots, but a different configuration, and we're just reconfiguring that so each structure would have its own lot.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this from the public? Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There's a variance that needs to be granted, you know, before the platts approved with this.
Oh, yeah, the variance on clearance.
Well, the variance due to -- is there any requirements?
To the lot size.
Well, it's the proximity to the created lot line between one and two. The structures will be closer than 10 feet to that lot line, which, you know, normally would be required to be 10 feet. You know, each structure would have to be 10 feet from the common lot line, but they're going to be inside that 10-foot setback, so it needed a variance to be able to record a lot line encroaching into the setback.
Which is option A in the planning alternatives. Am I correct? Or option one?
Yes.
So, if everyone would like to read option one? And the staff recommends option one?
Yeah, alternative number one on page seven.
When everything was hunky-dory between -- are we in the discussion phase now?
Yes.
Everything was hunky-dory with the fire department code?
Yeah.
That got settled.
Well.
That was our one issue before because we weren't, you know, it was, you know, he said she has had whatever. I just wanted to make sure that was.
Yeah, we're on the same page with the fire department. We went out there, looked at it, and had a discussion, and came to the same conclusion.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the variance in the final plat with the condition that the wooden exterior stairs and landing on the west side of the duplex addressed on 203 East Lauderdale Street be approved and replaced with metal stairs and a landing.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the variance and the final plat, correct?
Correct.
With the conditions as stated in option number one. And really, now the discussion should happen, but I'm not about to stop anybody in this mood. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The variance and the final plat are approved. We will now move on to new business, which is a -- these are site plan approvals, so they don't require a public hearing?
Right, unless you get the board wants to open up a public hearing, it doesn't require one.
Okay. So, the first one is Site Plan A, Little Caesar's Pizza Site Plan at 408 and 410 North Jackson Street, as listed on pages -- let's see, this would go from 17 through?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
Thirteen.
Hmm?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, 321? Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Staff report.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just give a brief description of the request.
Please.
It's a property's at 408 and 410 North Jackson Street. It's Zone C1, central commercial. Property size or the site size is roughly around 19,167 square feet. Request is for a fast food restaurant or Little Caesar's Pizza restaurant, facility for housing. It'll be a drive-through. You know, you see the site plan, so it meets all the requirements of the zoning regulations, and staff gives a favorable recommendation.
Do they have an existing business there present?
No, it's a vacant lot. I believe it's on there's a gravel driveway that goes from Wall Street Alley to North Jackson, and then there's a concrete pad.
Is there anybody here to represent this request? Could you come forward and state your name and address?
I'm Kenny Sadler. I'm the engineer of record for the Civil Work, 4866 Woodbury Highway, Manchester, Tennessee.
Question, this is to be drive-through only, right?
I think it's drive-through and pickup, so you could.
Drive-through and pickup, but not a sit-down?
Right, no seats.
I see.
They have existing business now, they're just moving.
Yeah, it's further up, actually, a little bit up this way, and this one's down by Lightning Lou. The new one would be between -- that's that building you see if you look at page 21, that building with the 23 over it, that's actually Lightning Lou.
That's the low park of that street.
Yes, it is.
Don't pray for rain.
Yeah, we've done a lot to accommodate for it.
How, since I just talked about flood control, how is -- have the flood control gentleman looked this over, Lee?
Yes, I mean, they.
They're in favor?
Yeah, they approved it. It gets looked at and approved by them before it comes to this board.
Okay. Is it emptying to the street or is it some other way?
There's a catch basin on the property that's just in the right of way that picks up the water from this area.
Yeah.
But we're actually going to reduce that. We're going to put pervious concrete in, which will allow the water to filter in the ground.
Oh, good.
And it will lessen the impact on the existing drainage in that area.
Very good. That's one of the things we learned about. Yeah, that's good stuff right there. We like it when you say pervious concrete. That's good. So, do we have a motion on this?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve, I have two seconds, to approve this request for, or this, what is this, this site plan, to approve this site plan. Is there any more discussion needs to be done? Hearing none? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. So carried.
Thank you.
The next is a site plan request to build a church made by Mr. Randall Thomas, and the church is going to be located at 801 South Washington Street. Okay. I took a look at that the other day. That's a big empty lot.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was just going to give a brief description.
Please.
Okay, the property is on the corner of, I guess, West Monroe and South Washington Street, Zone C2. The size of lots, or the size of the lot is 36,000 square feet approximately. It's providing the, it meets all the zoning requirements as far as parking, setbacks, landscaping, and staff gives a favorable recommendation.
Lee, from this time forward, don't bother asking me permission. Start explaining right up front. There's no sense, because we need to be explained to anyway, so let's make that a standard part of the practice that you explain it for. Do I have a motion of any kind?
Motion to approve.
Sir, I have a motion in second to approve the request to build a church at the site plan, to approve the site plan, build church at 801 South Washington Street. Do we have any discussion? Since we're talking about flood control, and this is obviously going to have quite a bit of parking, how has the water flow and drainage and things been planned for this? It looks like there's a creek or something or some kind of flow. Does anybody know?
There's a detention basin on the right left of the church.
That's the L shape?
That's the L shape.
Okay.
They're rerouting all that drainage around the side. It will start to.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Site plan is approved, I mean, no. So, the next item B, zoning text amendments. This will be a public hearing. Zoning text amendments on page 30, beginning on 30. Does it go to the end, Lee, or is there two different things? I thought there was two things. Yeah, there's another one at the end, right?
Yeah, it goes to those.
37?
It's 36.
36.
36.
30 to 36.
30 to 36, okay. So, Lee, you want to explain?
Yeah, we were looking at the uses in the C1 and C2 district and wanted to get the uses that were, that needed, that had higher traffic counts and that needed, it would maybe be best if they had parking required than be in the C1 where parking isn't required. So, tried to rearrange it where we put those uses in the C2 so parking would be provided, and then uses that didn't have such high parking counts, leave them in C1. And then, of course, there are the uses that usually are in a central business district that we left in there, like commercial and business and financial services and restaurants and such, but, you know, they do get a lot of pedestrian traffic in central business
Now, does this, could this end up creating some undue situations where we might preclude somebody from being able to zone their property C1 or C2 or whichever one they're looking to do?
No, that's usually dictated by the land use plan as what they're zoned or what we're, the city's wanting the development pattern to be like in the particular area. So, I mean, that study's already been done and approved and adopted by the Board of Mayor and Alderman as areas determined to be C1 or C2.
Okay, and this, if we change this, this doesn't affect any of the existing?
There would be some existing businesses that are in operation right now that if they went out of business for three years, they wouldn't be able to reestablish it, but the way the state law's written and our ordinance, our zoning ordinance mirrors it, is that if it's a business or industrial, that if it goes out of business, that they have 36 months to reestablish a business use or a commercial use back onto that lot, and they don't lose their nonconforming status.
Okay, well, that's good, because, I mean, you don't want to have some, you know, some business go out and another one come in within six months or whatever, and all of a sudden, now we're telling them, no, you can't.
We have to give, you have to give them 36 months.
This would probably have affected those subdivided lots that we just had in here. No?
This is all just about uses. It's not about lot sizes.
Because they have a parking problem there.
Well, they're C2, so they're, you know, the only way that they would get out of having a parking issue is if they were resumbed to a different district, either C1 or residential district where, you know, all those uses would stay residential.
Yeah.
And then they wouldn't have, but it's just converting those into businesses that have, you know, high parking needs.
Okay. I know I'm asking a lot of questions.
I have a question, if I might, relative to this. I'm moving to C1 now, Mr. Wilson. You have under current uses, number 11, places of religious worship, and then under proposed uses, you've got under six, religious culture and fraternal activities. That include places of religious worship as well?
Yes, I mean, that would be included in that, but not all those would be included. This would be like a church. This would be like a church, and if you had like a school or some type of accessory use, there are.
That also would be included.
Yeah.
That would also include churches.
Right.
So, the wording was a little different.
Yeah, I was.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I looked at this ahead of time.
Uh-huh.
Tried to digest what was being presented to understand it before we got here. I'm a little confused by what I'm seeing. Confused to the extent I can't ask an intelligent question. Proposed uses versus current uses. You're proposing to change the text in the ordinances.
Right. The proposed uses are the ones that I'm proposing. The current ones are the ones that are currently in the ordinance as a use by right.
And then, right, under that, under C1, you've got proposed use upon review, and then current use upon review. What does that mean?
That means that those are the proposed, those are, those uses that are upon review are the ones that we give conditional use permits to, to allow them to operate in that district. That's what I'm proposing as far as conditional uses in that district, and what currently is allowed is the current uses upon review. So, you've got the current uses upon review or uses that, that right now, if someone wanted to do it in this specific districts, they would have to get a conditional use permit. The ones I'm proposing are the ones that they would need to get a conditional use permit if we changed the text.
It seems that there are a lot more items, seven versus three, that are going to have to be proposed, that are going to have to be conditional use permitted.
That's correct.
Is that good?
Well, you know, the reason why it would have to have a conditional use is because some of those uses are those would be, could be, you know, conflicting with their neighbors, so we would want it as a conditional use permit, so when it came in there, we could do something to try to mitigate their effect on their neighbors.
Okay, so basically, like, what it's saying is, the current uses right now are the ones that, pretty much, as long as they fit these wordings, there's not much we can say or do to stop that from happening.
Right, their uses by right, they're allowed to go in there.
That are allowed to go in there, and so you've reduced the number of those, but you've allowed some of them to be put into a place where we would have the prerogative to make a determination on a conditional use or whatever instead.
Yes.
Okay, so we still have the ability to do it, it's just, it gives us a little control over what happens as opposed to, no, it's in the wording that they have the right to put this kind of a business there, and we can't stop them, pretty much.
Exactly.
Okay. And it's the same for the C2 table as well? Well, in that, then I go back to what Steve asked. We have item 31, religious culture and fraternal activities in C2. Why would we have the, a C2, are we trying to say that we would allow a C1 to have the same thing as a C2?
Well, in some cases, you would. Matter of fact, all the uses that are allowed in C1 would be allowed in C2 automatically. That's, I mean, that's the way it is right now written in the ordinance, and that was intended, the text amendment would be to, everything that's allowed by right in the C1 district would be allowed by right in the C2 district.
The only difference being that the parking issues.
Right, just the parking requirements aren't, they're way in for C1 because you're trying to create a more compact type of development where in the C2, you're trying to, you've got to accommodate vehicles. trying to, you got to accommodate vehicles.
So, everything that's in C-one is in C-two, but there are other things added in C-two that are not included in C-one.
That's correct.
So, you got to go through and pick out. Okay.
Well, one through nine, right? It's one through nine are the same, are those?
No, no.
One through nine, C-one, proposed uses, is the same one as one through nine, proposed uses in C-two.
No, I mean, they would be added to that, way it would sit, state in the ordinance would be, would be like every use, you know, all uses in C-one, you know, is a, is a use by right in C-two, and then you would start the numbering of the uses that were specifically allowed in C-two in addition to that.
So, then from ten down.
Those were added into this one because they weren't in the original. Remember, the current uses are on the right-hand side, the proposed ones are on the left. I got confused by that, too, when I was trying to understand it today. So, do I have a motion on this at all?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the, the, now, do we send a favorable recommendation to the, okay, I have a motion and second to send a favorable recommendation for the zoning text amendment changes as proposed in Agenda Item 7B2. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? The ayes have it, it carries. So, now we have, we have one more item, other new business, a discussion item, subdivision text amendment four, which begins, I guess, on thirty-seven and carries on. Lee, you want to explain this?
I got a PowerPoint presentation I was going to do for this one. Because it's going to take a little explanation. Okay, currently, source of circulation, we've got the requirement of requiring two ingress egress points and a major subdivision, being that that's a subdivision where a new street's going to come in. We've looked at it.
Wasn't, just, sorry to interrupt, but wasn't there also a, like, forty-five or fifteen, fifty-house number on that?
A minimum or a maximum.
Okay, okay.
And what that means is, there was a lot of confusion about that, is thinking that it required two entrances, but, you know, if you're like, if, say, for instance, there was a stubbed-out street that was next, like, in an adjacent subdivision, well, if they connected to that street that had one entrance, that would have been two ingress egress points into a subdivision. So, it wasn't strictly just the two entrances from the main street, it could have been a, a connection to an adjacent subdivision as well, too. But, you know, we, we had discussions about it and wanted to create a situation where we used a, more of a metric, so it didn't seem so arbitrary that, you know, in certain situations where everybody would be, create any more of a, an improvement in the connectivity of the area. So, did some research and looked at what some other communities were doing on connectivity and found a metric, a metric that they use and communities can make it as strict as they want to or as, you know, as lenient as they'd like to, there's a, because they're doing it based upon a calculation. But it's a simple calculation, it's just, you add up the number of segments and then you, or links, which is, are basically just the section of road between an intersection or between an intersection and a dead end, and then the nodes, which is like a dead end or an intersection or a curve that's greater than seventy-five degrees, but you would just, you would add up the, and then you just do division, you divide the nodes into the links, and if you have over a, a certain number or whatever the minimum number is in the regulations, then, you know, that, the development, the development meets that criteria, then they get approved. If they don't, then they got to go back to the drawing board and, and draw it up to where they can meet that standard.
So, you created a standardized number that you could use?
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry, the statistic came in.
So, I just, you know, why would we connect our streets, desire to create close neighborhoods with greater walkability, because with these connections, being that now that we require sidewalks along one side of each road, it's not only just a connection for vehicles, it's a connection for pedestrian movement as well, too. As land use regulation, street connectivity has direct nexus to improving the health, safety and general welfare of the public. Only applies to new subdivisions, which have yet submitted a preliminary plat, it's not retroactive. Purpose of it is to reduce the travel distance and travel times for drivers, less burden on collector and arterial streets, higher percentage of mode share for bicycling and walking, better and more efficient emergency vehicle access and more efficient public service access like mail delivery and garbage pickup. Right here's, kind of gives you an idea of what, what it's trying to accomplish. See the house right there, try to get to the school, you have to walk across private property to get there, which usually isn't approved by landowners, and then to drive it, you've got to go out of your way to get onto the main line and go up and go to the school, where if you do the connectivity index, you have more connectivity, you have more of a straight route to the school for vehicles and pedestrians. So, it shortens the, the, the distance from the destination from their home. The connectivity ratio, the ratio is determined, the connectivity in a neighborhood by dividing the number of links by the number of nodes in the network. Node, any intersection of two street segments, it's also a cul-de-sac or a permanent turnaround, such as a dead-end street or a stubbed-out street and curves greater than seventy-five degrees. Links are the connections between the nodes, and it shows you the.
Lee, can you define links and nodes for me?
I'm getting ready to do that. What is a node? It's a terminus of a street or an intersection of two or more streets. Any location where a street T intersects with another street of any classification shall be considered a node. A dead-end road, cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac or stubbed-out street would be a node. Any curve or bend of a street that exceeds seventy-five degrees would be considered a node. Any curve or bend of a street that does not exceed seventy-five degrees shall not be considered a node. So, it has to be a very sharp curve before it's considered a node. The range, it ranges from one to two-point-five. Two-point-five is a perfect grid street. Value of one is a tree network where it would, there's disconnect and it would just go out, just cul-de-sacks, and that's pretty much how it would end, and then you'd have to go back in and out the same way. A connectivity of, ratio of one-point-four or greater is widely considered to be well-connected in both planning and transportation literature. Anything less than that is considered not well-connected. One-point-four is also considered the base value for encouraging growth of walkable pedestrian communities. Connectivity analysis can be done on any network, not just vehicles. Separate requirements for different transportation mode, modes could prove to be very useful in creating connected communities. Right here, it's kind of example of it, a very basic illustration. There's a grid street, which you see what the connectivity ratio is, is one-point-five-six. You've got fourteen segments, you've got nine nodes, so that gives you a ratio of one-point-five-six, where you have the one entrance.
Stop, stop, stop. I don't understand that. Just, you have a what else to understand that, or if you do, go ahead and lead me on it, but I don't understand what you just said.
When calculating this, say, these were the streets within a subdivision. You see, you would have, you have this one, that's one segment, and then the intersection is a node, another section, node, and so there was fourteen of these links right here that connect nodes. The nodes are the intersections, that's an intersection, and that's an intersection. You take those intersections and you add them up and there's nine of them. The streets in between those intersections are the links, and there's fourteen of them in that grid.
Okay.
And then you divide the nine into the fourteen and you get to one-point-five-six. That's how it's calculated.
Okay. Yeah, I understood it. Yeah, you kind of blew over to divide this into that part last time.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. And this is a, a traditional subdivision that you'll see with one way in, one way out, and you have the cul-de-sacs. So, there's six nodes, that's these three, and then you've got the three intersections right there. And then the, you have the, the street links that are between those intersections, so you've got six of those that connect the, the nodes or the dead-end street intersection. So, it's six links divided by six nodes, which you get a ratio of one, which is below the one-point-four metric that they showed as being connected. But we do not count the exterior road or exterior intersections. It's all internal.
So, on the bottom picture, we have to understand that there's actually, you're showing us three long shapes of.
These are streets, yeah, that's a street.
Streets, but they're actually, if we, if we duplicated that on the top one, they're actually divided into four individual lots, let's say, on the right-hand side?
Well, no, that's just the street pattern, it's not really a lot.
There'll be a bunch of lots, and there's, there's a lot more connectivity at the top than at the bottom.
Yeah, yeah.
And that could be just a block where you would have, like, say, six lots, three facing this road and three facing that one, or, you know, whatever configuration that the developer did.
Does length of the street matter?
No, not in this, it's, it's just the number.
You know what I mean?
No, it's, it's just the, it's just the number of streets, segments, and then the number of intersections or dead ends.
Number, not, not length.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's not lengths at all, it's, it's the total number of streets, and then it's, you know, divided by the number of intersections or dead ends, you add those up, those make the nodes. And then, the point is to have.
Does it seem weird that that wouldn't be, be taken into consideration? Like, what if you have a really long street?
Well, it is taken into consideration in our ordinance, about, I think it's like, I think it's two-thousand linear feet or, it's somewhere between like fourteen-hundred to two-thousand linear feet of street, a dead-end street couldn't be any longer than
Okay, good.
than that length, yeah. Then we have block length requirements as well, too.
Okay.
All right.
Continue, please.
This would be another example of, you know, you see the cul-de-sacs in the, in the subdivision and the, and the intersections, which are all about red dots, those are nodes. They, the ones that are numbered are links. And you just add them up, the links, there's eleven of them, there's eleven right there. There's ten nodes, there's ten red dots in each cul-de-sac and on each inter, intersection. You divide it, it's a one-point-one.
So, that's not a good one.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's lacking in connectivity. Any questions on, on this slide? Do? Okay. Another example. The, the links are the green dots, the nodes are the black dots on the map. You'll see at the interchanges or intersections, there's black dot, dead end, black dot, then you've got the green dot between, on the, on the segment in between them. So, there's thirty-six links, there's twenty-one nodes on the map, and that connectivity index would be twenty-one divided into thirty-six would be one-point-seven-one, which would be considered connected or have a good connectivity ratio. Here's an example of a subdivision in our, in Tullahoma. You'll see that the links are, the links are numbered, the nodes are in red, red numbering. There are twenty links and seventeen nodes, this subdivision has a connectivity index of one-point-one-eight, that's seventeen divided by twenty.
It's not a good one, then.
Not with the connectivity.
Not from the, no.
But this one had opportunities to be connected to the one north of it and it, it just didn't happen, but, I mean, it could have, and it would have.
Well, this was at a time when they weren't forced to do it.
Well, well, right, I mean, there wasn't any, there wasn't any standard for connectivity.
Right.
So, if you have a fire back here and you've got utility work going on here, blocking the subdivision.
You're dead.
You know, you're.
You're burned.
Yeah. Here's another one. The green is links between, you know, between the cul-de-sacs and the intersections, the red are the nodes. There's, there's nine, if you count them, there's eight, so you've got a point-nine.
And that's one of ours, right?
Yeah, but here's a good one that's in, in the city, though. So, it's not all bad, you know, there are some, Bel Air is, is a good example of it. There it is, it had forty nodes, if you want to go through there and count all of them, it was sixty-two links, and that was a one-point-five-five.
So, that's a good one.
That's a good one. This one down here, Westwood, is, is also a good one, we could have, I mean, I, you know, it was going to be about like a one-point-seven. So, I mean, there are examples of good connectivity and examples of some that are, you know, maybe that would fall short of the standard that's been created.
You didn't go over a few streets from my house, is it?
During those times, they really did take care of that.
It's all really well-connected in that area, if you look at it, sidewalks and streets.
So, this could, so the whole idea of this would be to start unifying subdivisions more as well as with, with the walkability and stuff, you kind of unify subdivisions and make more of a community atmosphere as well?
Yeah, and you're not so segregated there, you're just, you know, where you're, you know, you're sort of like in your, a little, a little area there, you actually have the ability, it gives you route choices, so you don't, you know, you don't, you're not stuck going just one way in and one way out, you have the ability to choose which way you want to come in and out. Same way with walking, I mean, you live in a subdivision that doesn't connect, then you're going to be crossing personal property of other people or privately-owned property, they're not, you know, they might not let the pedestrian traffic come into their backyard or.
Like a simple dog leg, how would that, just, I'm trying to get my head around it, like, they come off the street and they do a dog leg, you know, you know what I'm talking about? Just like a smaller subdivision, like nine lots, because you were thinking it was like, how would that work? You know what I'm talking about? Like, just a little dog leg.
Like when you turn into Charindale?
Well, no, Charindale, no, I was thinking more like, um, old one on King's Lane, it's a simple dog leg right across from King's Ridge, King's Place, is it King's Place?
The Royal Court one?
Maybe, I don't know. Count that off, and I'm just trying to get my.
I mean, if that curve, if that curve, or you're talking about that dog leg's greater than seventy, seventy-five degrees and it dead ends, that would be a one, you'd have two nodes, that would be the dead end, and that would be the, the curve.
Curve.
And then you'd have the two road segments from, the one segment from the entrance to the, to the curve.
That'd be a one.
That would be a one.
That would eliminate those.
Try to, I mean, you don't, there would be ways, there, look at those and be able to maybe connect back and, and curve instead of where it dead ends and does kind of a loop. You've seen that, like, in Ma- Macon Manor, instead of the straight-out cul-de-sacs.
Okay.
And you could actually increase the number of links and outnumber the nodes. And you could actually increase the number of links and outnumber the nodes, and be able to get a, oh, I'm, all this, uh, the information that I'm giving you right now is just information. In the, the actual text movement, it's 1.2, so I'm not, I'm not trying to go overboard with this. It's, you know, it's less than what's, you know, the standard. And, uh, there's a couple other communities that do this.
They said the standard was 1.4?
Right. It's, in their study, or what they consider, this, uh, from the literature that I read, but that isn't what everybody does. I mean, Columbia does it already, and they just require 1.2.
Why would we not at least require the standard, 1.4?
That would be a decision for, for this board to make, but, uh, staff is recommending 1.2, especially at the very beginning. It's, 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 it's gonna take time to acclimate to this, so if we set the standard so high at the very beginning, that if, you know...
My, my only question with this, and I think Rupert and I were talking about it up here, is, you know, I don't know how would a developer, or the developers would feel about this. Would they say, great, I want, this is what I wanted? Or would they be a little bit averse to it? Um, you know, we have a developer up here on the board, and I don't know what he would say to that.
I don't know. Um, I don't think you should go any more than that 1.2, in my opinion.
You know, we do have, you know, it, it is common knowledge on this board, probably, that, you know, in the general public, sometimes we have a, um, a reputation, whether it's, it's deserved or not, that we, you know, are sort of hardcore. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna continue that reputation if we can help it. I wanna do what's right for the community and for down the road for the future, um, but I don't wanna make, I don't wanna close the door to, to developers from coming in here either. So, I mean, is this something they do in Murfreesboro, and Columbia, and, and most of mid, small to mid cities?
No, no, they don't do it everywhere. I mean, most, like, a lot of places are just required to, you know, multiple, like, ingress, egress points into subdivision based upon the lot, number of lots, and, uh...
Manchester doesn't do it, Shelbyville doesn't do it, Winchester doesn't do it.
No.
See, and what you're gonna hear is the local developers that develop in those communities. I'm not gonna build in Tallahassee, 'cause they're, you know, they're a pain in the tooth.
How much of a financial burden is it, though, on them?
Well, it would, it would definitely, you know...
A little bit, or, you know, that's...
Well, it depends on the size of the subdivision, depending on the, the, the actual financial burden, and what they're planning on building. I mean, there's all kinds of factors that go in.
And, and the problem is, is we are an aging city. We don't have any big swath of property that can accommodate a great connectivity ratio. You are, am I right about that, Scott? We don't have, you know, there's not gonna be another Bel Air subdivision, or Tera or anything, 'cause we don't have the property to do that much. So you're limited to your acreage, and when you do that, I think your connectivity is gonna be limited as well.
Well, I feel, one of the concerns that, we put in a requirement, and it was just a, a set requirement, that if you did a subdivision, it had to have two points of entrance and egress. And we did that because we recognized there were so many places in our town right now where there's only one way in and one way out, and if there's something wrong, and there's a fire, you're burned. And we know it. There are subdivisions that are like that right now, in our town. So we said, if, and this was just last summer, when we sat down and said, okay, here's the situation, we're gonna change this to have two points of entrance and egress. And yes, we had some people that were a little, wanted to back up against it, and say, wait a minute now, but they went ahead and they've gotten, they understand that now, that they have that, two points. Now, if they had large subdivisions, it could end up with more than two points. I mean, i- if you had enough points inside, it could end up to where you might need three or four entrances or exits, but...
Well, but Tara only has one entrance, right? And what's the one that's bigger all down from that?
Like the Manor has one.
Like the Manor has one?
Like Wood has one.
Yes.
All of those were done, but they were all done long before...
Why? I mean, we, we have to, we have to think for the future.
And if there's fire in there, if there's fire in there, or something that, and something that's blocking up here, or something, everybody's only got one way in and one way out. And that's the danger. That's why we put the two, the requirement. You were, Scott, you were here when we put the two, two entrance egresses.
Well, I, I think that, you know, we're forward-thinking if we, we make them have more than one entrance. You know, if, if, that's what our, that's what our task is.
And that's what everybody says when you talk to them. We want our, our neighbors to be more connected. We're tired of having to go all the way out, and then go all the way out down, and we'd rather make it more walkable and bikeable and all of that.
Sure. But see, ours, the problem with, that we had with ours was, it said you had to have a pointer of access or egress. You had to have two points of access and egress. And they had to go, I believe, to a collector's street, did they not, Lee, or some kind of street?
No.
I thought they had to feed out to a...
No, I mean, you could've had us, like, like even there, like, uh, if you're looking at the Bel Air area there, where you have subdivisions. You got subdivisions there that have more than one entrance into them, but they're not connected to a collector. They're all, it's all connected by a system of local streets.
Yeah, okay. Well, local streets, but they had to have some kind of way to, to get out to the local streets and get away if there was something wrong, or whatever.
Well, we could connect, Tara, we could connect them all on the east side, just go in there and do, you wanna do that?
That would be a good one.
I think you gotta give them fair, honest compensation, and then they'd love to...
I'm just, that's, that's tongue-in-cheek.
And you said this is not directed.
But, but what's being proposed here? I can see where it will probably create some confusion at first, until people understand how the calculations work, and how you have to get to it, and what that calculation means. And if it means you have to have an extra entrance or egress, okay. But the one that we had right now, you had to get to a local street, so if you connected to another subdivision, that really didn't count, where it could have in this new system.
Right, so it could in this new system. That was one of the questions.
Yeah.
Yeah. See, so if you, if you, in this new system, if you've got a subdivision here and a subdivision here, and each one of them have an entrance and egress point, and you connect them with a connector road, now that counts, and that gets you, you're in access and egress you need. So that's what...
Oh, in, as I see it, what we've done, we've eliminated the need for two entrances and egresses.
Yeah, this takes care of that issue.
You've eliminated that, because with this scenario, which you talked about, you can have one entrance, and then have lots of nodes, and lots of connectors, but only one entrance. And I don't like that. We've eliminated the, the good thing that we've done, with, this is not bad at all, but it's eliminated the fact that you...
We still don't have the, the two entrance and egress.
Yeah, 'cause you, yeah, unless you keep that requirement...
Can't you have a vote?
For having multiple entrances, then this is, oh, it, I mean, it's, it doesn't solve the problem, to me.
This is just a discussion, folks. This is, this is a presentation by Lee of an idea. This is not something we're gonna take a vote on tonight, so. Something for us to digest and think about more.
But, but, did, did, is that, did I miss a point?
Is, will this take, I mean, if this, if we decide to carry this banner, so to speak, does this replace the, like Ray said, will it replace it?
Yes.
And it could, and, and in theory, it could put us in a position where you would only have one entrance and egress, and still have a, and still have a good...
Ratio.
Connectivity ratio.
It's possible.
Just, I think you said, you said, if we don't have a lot of swaths of land to be building these subdivisions we've built in the past, where they, we maybe missed the mark. Uh, to me, I mean, if it's a smaller subdivision, you'll be able to do what you need to, if they meet this mix, because there's just not that much land out there to divide.
You had a point?
It's your study sessions. I don't know if you want to allow me to speak or not, but...
Certainly.
Oh, hell.
There are a couple points that I would like to make if I could. One, to the question about available land for development. We absolutely do have available land for development. Just like we've been looking at the Avoca Road area, I can think of one property owner with a huge farm out there. I forgot, do you know how many acres of land?
I don't...
Off of Riley Creek at the Y?
I was thinking of the Markham's place. They have about five hundred acres up there.
Yeah, I mean, there's that land as well, but this is a different property. I can't think of the last name.
Oh, you're talking about Dr. Bill's property on, by the creek, around there, outside of Seagull?
Yeah, they're outside Seagull.
This is right, when you're at the Y, and if you stayed on Riley Creek, there's a huge farm.
On the left?
On the left.
Yeah, I'm not sure who that is.
And then if you continue up Avoca Road, there's still several developments that are being planned.
Right.
If you go out Ledford Mill Road, there's a lot of available property that could be developed. If you go, um, further south of the city, on the southwest side, there's a lot of land that could be developed. And then if we back up and think about this, I know you mentioned what a couple other communities, one of them you named is Manchester. One of the things that Manchester does not have is a certified planner. They don't have any type of planning position in their city. So one of the things that we are doing well is that we are trying to take a long-range look at what the needs of the community are and meet those needs. And every week when we're meeting in those development committee meetings, we're hearing from developers, from property owners, and they're telling us that this, a couple of things in our code are killing development. They're telling us, when you say that I have to build internal sidewalks, you're killing my development. When you tell me I have to have two means of ingress, egress, might as well walk away and not build it. So we've had, um, I know you guys know Andy Best, he's the local surveyor, he does a lot of work here. He's one of the ones that sat down with us, gave us a list of about seven items. And to Lee's credit, he's taken each one of those, and we've tried to look at, how can we address what, what they're saying their concerns are and why they can't build here? And see how we can balance between, 'cause what I regularly hear from the board of mayor and aldermen is, they care about sidewalks a lot. So I've got on the one side, I've got our community members and our elected officials saying, we want to promote walkability, we want to have sidewalks everywhere, we want everything connected. And then the other side, the development community, saying, it's too costly to build in Tallahassee. You guys are ridiculous, you're killing my development, I can't afford this. And we gotta find that middle, and I think we're trying to come up with some things that give a rational basis, that we can stand behind, that, you know, it, it is different than other communities in how they look at it. You know, you guys know that I just most recently came from Murfreesboro. You know, on the issue of sidewalks in Murfreesboro, we said, we want sidewalks everywhere for everyone, and we didn't accept sidewalks on one half of a subdivision like we do here. We said, you have to build a complete sidewalk network.
Period.
Yes. We were fighting about, when should the sidewalk be put in? And developers were fighting us on not wanting it until the street, seventy-five percent build out, when the street was ready to be accepted. That's when they wanted to build the sidewalk, and we had people saying that wasn't good enough. We want the sidewalks a hundred percent up front. We don't want to wait. So, whole different discussion, but what I can say that I think we did well is we predicted, we protected the goals of, uh, providing the sidewalks, and protecting home values, and giving people what they want in their subdivision. So I don't think we need to go that far, but I do think we need to remember that just because Manchester and whoever these other communities are, they're not doing it, I also think they're not protecting their residents as well as we are.
Well, we're not those other communities.
And they're not planning for their future as well as we could be, because we are trying to plan it.
We want to be different.
Yeah. And I think you have a tough...
Obviously, we want to be better.
Of course.
We do.
That's the whole point, you know. We want to be better than the other guys.
If Manchester came up here and said, we're gonna institute a 1.8 ratio, we'd want to be 1.9, and we'd want to have ingress and egress, right?
You're requiring sidewalks on both sides of this street now.
Well, look at there.
So, one of the things that I saw as a, and I don't know if this is what you were proposing, but I saw some, in, in some material you provided, where, um, in lieu of a street connection, they provided a sidewalk connection as an alternative.
Yeah, that was in the, in the, in the current regulations with the two, uh, the two, uh, ingress, egress points. If there's, if it's just not, they're not able to do it because of adjacent development, then they needed to provide at least a pedestrian connection.
So it could be, Terra Estates could be a perfect example of that, where they didn't build the street connection to be tied into a neighboring, uh, development, but they could build a pedestrian connection...
And that would be considered...
And get their links up that way.
Yeah, that would be considered a, a link in the calculation.
While, while we're talking, while we're on the sidewalk issue, one thing, and I've been on, this is my second slice at the planning commission, is somebody explained to me why in this town we'll have areas of sidewalks and then dead and nothing. And some of it may be new building, and some of it may be old, and they don't have to have a sidewalk. I don't understand that. Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, there, you know, you, like, right now, we require anyone that does a development along a collector or arterial street to put in, you know, if it's on our, on our master sidewalk plan, we require them to put in that section of sidewalks in that section. Uh, there are some businesses that are existing there, that were exist, existing before we required that, so they don't have it. Uh, you know, there are some that, you know, I kind of scratch my head, I don't know why, because when I got here, there were some new buildings, like, not far from here, the NHC building, why it didn't have a sidewalk in front of it, there was, I, there were, I assume there was a reason why it didn't have it in front of it, I didn't, you know...
Just nuts.
Yeah.
You see people walking down the road there.
That's the worst, one of the worst places in town, them trying to, to navigate, um, see the line. We've, we've approved something to help that, I thought, here in the last six months. Had, there been a sidewalk plan?
We do. We have a surface transportation project.
That, we're gonna, that'll help that, but still, hold on, um, you know, that's a dangerous section.
But by comparison, Parkview is building public sidewalk on two sides of their development. So that's where, on the front end, you know, we were able to talk with them, and on the William Northern side of their lot, it actually, you know, by the letter of our code, wasn't gonna be required for it to be at the street. We worked with them, and they agreed to move it from back on their property out to the public street, so we could continue that public network.
We made that part of the site plan approval.
That was for the variant, the, the, the planned unit development.
Yeah.
I just think, I think it looks tacky to go sidewalk, nothing, you know, just...
And not just tacky, it's unsafe. You have somebody jumping down on the road and walking.
Yeah.
Ray, you had something you wanted to say.
But one thing, if we're going to pursue, and I, I, again, doing this, it keeps the arbitrariness out of it, it puts some metrics to it, but there's nothing that would keep us from continuing to require multiple ingress and egress, and still have, meet this connector, the metric that we're proposing here, 1.2. Is there a reason not to do that? It seems like that's a...
Either that, or if you, it could be that, of course, I don't know, Lee would have to do the calculation, but it could be that if you set it at 1.4, which is the standard that most, that everybody else says is a standard, that might force the multiple in, ingress and egress.
I don't think, I don't think they're connected, I don't think.
I think there's gonna be some pieces of ground or acreage that you can't, though.
Yeah, there...
I'm thinking of like, uh, Siders Point on Lake Tahoe, there's one way in, one way out there. I guess they could in that last cul-de-sac, came on out with another. But there's gonna be certain places that will do too.
There's gonna be issues where the lot's gonna be too narrow to have, or, or, the topography, the surrounding topography is just, is just not gonna be practical.
But that wording is already in the code, that if the topography doesn't allow for it, they're not required to put in a second entrance.
Right, it's, it's grounds to give relief, yes.
Well, you know, getting back, after Jennifer told us we have tons of property, she, you know, that was her, our rebuttal to our name, which may be true. The, the thing about it, a developer that's gonna, you know, we're not Murfreesboro where we're growing leaps and bounds. I doubt that we'll be a developer that would build a hundred or two hundred houses or any of that, 'cause we couldn't support that at this point.
Can't sell them.
Right, well, you can sell the, the starter homes.
Yeah.
You can't build enough of those, probably.
Right.
But, um, for a big development, we, we couldn't, you know, so... But, um, for a big development, we, we couldn't, you know, so what are they going to develop here in our town is the smaller stuff, that you will have more of the problem meeting those ratios and the connectivity probably.
Where you run into a problem there is, is just like you look at, at Emerald Meadows. If we would've had this requirement when Emerald Meadows, when they were bringing that whole thing, and I don't remember if you, you remember, they had like three different subdivision names and it was one big, yeah, and they were, there was a lot of chaos going on out there about that. But if we'd have made, you know, like Emerald Meadows connect with, you know, it's still vacant where it was supposed to be another subdivision right there. You've got these little small subdivisions there, and if we made them connect at least one way into each one of them, you'd be able to create that type of system of local roads that, that connected without having to go out onto the main road just to get to this next door subdivision.
Well, if, if we can learn from our past and do better, that's, that's all we can do. And just don't keep making the same mistakes. Sometimes we do that too. If you don't look at history, you will do it.
Well, we've had some good digestive material to work on and think about with it. I appreciate your time and work, Lee. This has been.
Yes, thank you.
I know this has been a lot of hard, and, and I asked you a few questions before you even got here with it, saying, what do you mean by 1.2 and all that sort of thing? And I know, and you were very patient with us, so we appreciate that very much.
If you all have any questions, you know, feel free to call or email me, come by the office, I don't mind, I'll be more than welcome to, I'd be more than glad to talk to you about it.
Do you get regular feedback from the developers when you're talking about this?
Oh, I get, they don't, they're.
No. Scott, can you help him with that?
It's kind of.
They're all a bashful group, they don't really.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I can guess.
Some of the most, you know, some of the mundane things you would think would be.
Trust me, Rupert and I were at that flood meeting and we got a lot of feedback.
Lot of feedback.
I think the biggest thing is they want to know what, what's expected on the front end and as clear as possible as we can make it.
Well, sure, because that's going to dictate what their costs are.
Yes. And so I would say the code that we have now, I think the fact that it's so inflexible is what seems to be the issue. We're saying, it's very clear, that's not the issue. It says it's two means of ingress and egress and very limited exceptions. And so that's what they're pushing back against is that it, it's very clear, that's not the problem. And then I do worry with the index, just like how we've had a very lengthy discussion and a lot of explanation, I am concerned how we communicate it in the code in a way that can be easily understood. Um, I think we'll have to develop some kind of illustration and probably a lot of communication with developers about it. But I think it's, it is fairly simple in concept once you understand it.
Well, I'll tell you what would help. I think for developers, and I think it would be helpful if you built a simple spreadsheet where they could count up their dots, put their numbers in and it'd give them a calculation at the bottom and tell them what their connectivity number is. I think that would be helpful for developers because I, I'm sure they're sitting there going, well, how in the world do I do this and what in the world? And that would make it easier. You could, you know, and, and it could be a self-explanatory. In this box you put this, in this box you put this, and here's what you're going to get.
I think it's like other items on the site plan. We, they'll usually give us a calculation and we go back and we verify those. So it creates that opportunity to explain to them if somehow they didn't do that ratio, that simple division right, we'll say, no, you didn't count your links correctly, here's how it.
I just think a, uh, Excel spreadsheet could be done in 15 minutes and it, and it'll take longer to type the words in to explain it than it will put the actual activities in it. But we appreciate all your work and we appreciate you helping and coming tonight too.
Absolutely.
Uh, we entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
Motion and second to adjourn. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.